On that note, I ask all those who would like the option to join me to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Town meeting requiring 100 members for a quorum, please turn your attention to your V voter and refresh it if you haven't done recently, and please mark present if you are in attendance. Once you hit the vote, you will see vote received, a gray box. We'll give everyone 40 seconds to note your attendance. The town meeting requiring 100 members for quorum, and we are having 151 in attendance. I see there is a sufficient number of members present to permit us to open the meeting, and I do so declare, prior to beginning, the Winchester Coalition and the Winchester Health Department are presenting a program on Thursday night, May 13th at 7:00 PM, titled Your Best Protection Is Here. Shauna Paro, infectious disease nurse for the Winchester Hospital, will be available to answer questions and explain why getting vaccinated is a key to getting back to normal. Parents of 12-years-old children and up, now's the time to get your questions answered. Info and to register is on the Winchester Coalition for Safer Community website. Moving on to Article Six. It has been moved and seconded to reconsider Article Six. We must have a two-thirds vote to place back on the floor. Mr. Paul Manginero. Is it still your wish to reconsider Article Six?
Yes, it is, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
And if I could, I had submitted some slides, I don't know if you still have them, but I could recite the information that I've gathered since the meeting. If you could, if you did have them, I'd like to ask for them to be presented to the entire town meeting.
Yeah, I just need to make sure I have a second first. Is there, do I have a second?
Second.
Joan Miller, Precinct Six. All panelists, please make sure you use your V voter. Mr. Paul Manginero.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Do you have the slides or not? I can just recite the information I've gathered since the last meeting. If you don't, that's okay.
Yes, we do have the slides. Give us one moment, we'll put them up for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Here you go, Mr. Paul, Mr. Manginero.
Thank you very much. A request of the vote for reconsideration, because after our last dialogue, we couldn't get any hardcore numbers or even ballpark figures from any of the other boards. Matter of fact, the only information we got was that we could not put a price tag on diverse community in school. And I think we're all in compliance that, in same like-mindedness, that diversity in schools and community is a major priority, but how do we get there is the important thing. As this slide will show, in year one, the projected revenue from the numbers I've gathered is 150,000, with an upfront payment of 500,000. I get to the 150,000 change by year one property tax estimated to be $141,000 from a proposed deal, and only $9,900 roughly from the 10% town share of the net operating income. And that's right from the Civico Pro Farmer Day of the 4/13. So if we get the annual first-year revenue of 150, and the upfront cost, which has been thrown around as a million, when it's really only a half a million, because the town is going to give back 500,000 from their town-funded affordability trust, that kind of leaves us behind the eight ball. I don't see how prudent how a $500,000 upfront cost gets somebody, or developer, ties up one of our main assets in town at value of a minimum of three and a half million dollars for 99 years. Then we go on the expense side. Based on conservative number of 40 students, which is in the middle range stated by Superintendent Evans, and at a cost of $15,000, which was the projected cost to educate a public school student from the state of Massachusetts in 2020, that was a 2020 number of 15,000, that would roughly be a cost to the town, $610,000. And then I did a little more homework on the annual lost property tax from the market development. If we did a project as seen on 15 Dick Street, it's fair to assume that we could generate over half a million dollars on a 51,000-square-foot residential building, which is the same size that Civico proposes. So that, those two numbers combined would be costing us annually 1.1 million dollars. Now, if we could investigate other building issues there, opportunities, it's fair to say it's an aggressive number, but that property could be valued at close to 8 million. So looking at a piece of property valued between three and a half conservatively and 8 million dollars. So those numbers alone make me want to pause and believe we need serious, more in-depth conversation about where we're going here, because I believe we've pledged a promise to the citizens of Winchester that we're going to do what's best in their best interest, both socially and economically. And I gave a couple of examples on the other slides. That 1.1 million dollar annual expense that we could save or gain is equivalent to a payment at one of the new school debt, school buildings, that could pay off some of that debt for that school. And if you look at the last slide, how I came up with the 512,000 property tax, that would be 31 new condo units developed on the waterfield lot, equivalent to what's on Dick Street. So for that data right there, and the fact that we don't have any hardcore data from anybody else, I propose that we ask ourselves, is this really the best deal for Winchester? I tend to say it isn't, and I hope we reconsider to put this back on the floor for further discussion, because I don't think we lose anything by having further discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further on the question, just so town meeting is clear, we are currently talking and discussing about reconsidering Article Six, which is the deal regarding the waterfield lot. So next on the question, Mr. Mariano Golubov, Vice Chair of the Select Board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I question why these numbers come up at the last minute. We've been working on this for over a year. We've had multiple public meetings, not just the Select Board, but also the Planning Board, as well as Finance Committee. All of those boards and committees voted in favor of this. And for it to come, for these numbers to come up at the last minute, put up on the screen for two minutes, and it's because the numbers wouldn't stand up to scrutiny if they had been, if they had gone to one of the public meetings we had. $8 million for the value of the land. We actually got a professional assessment, which said it's much lower than that, it's less than half that. So I'll start at the bottom, that's, that's just, doesn't make any sense. And to determine the value, we can get a professional assessment that we did, but you also go and you, essentially you put it up, you put it up for bid. And we did, we did a request for qualifications, then we did a request for proposals, we got a number of proposals. We picked from those proposals the one that fit best. We had a number of public meetings, Finance Committee recommended in favor, Planning Board recommended in favor, Select Board recommended in favor, Housing Partnership Board recommended in favor, Town Meeting recommended in favor. At last fall, Town Meeting ordered the Select Board to go negotiate with Civico for this. So the second item, the $512,000 of lost revenue, that is really, that is not very, that is not accurate at all. So it says if we built luxury condos there, that's how much we would collect, so we're losing that, except that it's not taking into account how much revenue we're going to collect from the rental buildings. It might be less than luxury apartments, but it's not zero. In fact, we said last week, on Monday, that it was going to be 200 to 250,000 dollars. So to say that we're going to lose 100% of tax revenue is just not accurate at all. And then the third point, or was the first point here, was the $610,000 in annual expense to the schools. Again, that's not accurate. 60 apartments, 40 students, you get that number, sure. But if we don't build 60 apartments, we lose, we lose safe harbor, and then next year we get a Hostile 40B, which is 300 apartments, that's 200 students. If we multiply by the same number that Mr. Manginero multiplied by, that's $3 million a year. So this might cost 600,000, but the other option, the option which is to not have affordable housing in the town center, instead to have 300 apartments built on the north side of town, because that's, that's what the option is, right? Let's call it what it is, costs $3 million a year. So there's a reason that after all the public meetings, over a year of work, every single board and committee voted yes on this development. So I urge everybody to vote no on reconsideration. There is absolutely no new data, and there's no reason why we should spend more time on this. Please vote no on reconsideration.
Madam Moderator, can I have a rebuttal to that, please?
No, I'm sorry, you actually don't get to rebuttal unless there's a question directed to you, and there's many town meeting members in line requesting to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I'll let you know when it's time. I will direct a question to you directly. Next up is Jeb Jereas of Precinct Eight.
Madam Moderator, I had some audio difficulties. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a couple of questions for Mr. Manginero. And the first question is, in the 30-unit condos, how many children will be living in those condos? I noticed that you only assign children to the rental units, and my understanding is that most of the luxury condos that are being built have multiple bedrooms. So could you tell me how many children you put into those units and how much the cost of the town would be for those children?
Thank you very much for that question to Mr. Manginero. Can you please provide us information on the count of children accounted for the condos that you're proposing, along with the cost implications of that to the town?
And in my assessment, like I said, I'm not the expert. We have other boards that are experts on this, that could not or would not provide us that information with the present proposal. But to answer your question, I think it's fair to assess that this would be closer to something like the ledges, two-bedroom condos with very few children on them. It would take further investigation, but I would, I would make an assumption that would be much less than what's proposed now.
Mr. Manginero, if I could have a follow-up?
Mr. Jereas, you may have a follow-up.
So, Mr. Manginero, you directly compared this to Dick Street? So I believe we do know what the bedroom layout is at Dick Street, and we just permitted 654 Main Street, and we definitely know, have a very good idea what the bedroom layout is there. So those are two developments which are essentially blocks from the waterfield lot. Why are those not appropriate developments to compare your proposed 31 condos to?
I think you're 100% correct. They should all be investigated, and I don't think that homework has been done yet. That's why we need further discussion, and we need to do more prudent work on this subject before we ask the taxpayers to give away money.
I would just reply, Mr. Manginero, that if you want to convince me that this is an issue, then I think you should provide the data, which you have said other people have not provided. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Members of town meeting, please remember that you are not to speak directly, and you need to ask all questions through the moderator. Next up, Russell Gay of Precinct Eight.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just have a few observations that I would like Select Member Mariano Golubov to emphasize. One is, if we wait, most likely we will lose safe harbor, which the state can then impose upon Winchester, a structure that could be possibly twice as large as what's being designed, developed, and proposed currently at the waterfield lot. Furthermore, this lot is a rare gem, not just in Massachusetts, but in New England, when it comes to affordable housing and other price units. It's a touch away from transit, and if we wait five years, we're going to also see a spike in cost for construction materials, for labor, and also possibly a larger structure, which incurs more cost and quote, more children. So if Select Member Mariano Golubov could elaborate on the comments that I just said, thank you.
Mr. Gay, I just want to make note, just so everyone is clear, we are currently debating on whether we should reconsider Article Six, not debating Article Six. Did you want to rephrase your questions?
Yes, well, I will rephrase it that if we were to wait to postpone this vote on the current project, I just want to, Select Member Mariano Golubov, to elaborate as to what would happen if we want to move this article forward this evening.
I'll accept that. Mr. Golubov, could you please provide more information? What would happen if Article Six were to fail?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. That, Ms. Gray is correct, the safe harbor expires in March of next year. So if we don't permit additional units by then, we will lose safe harbor, as we know from the proposals that failed, that Holton Street was close to 400 units, Forest Circle was close to 300 units. So that's what we would be facing, because we are well, well below the 10% that the state requires, or below 5% that the state requires, even with River Street and Cambridge Street already permitted. And those are the ones that gave us safe harbor. River Street gave us safe harbor until March of 2022. There's nothing else in the pipeline. This is the only thing that would re-up the safe harbor that's on the pipeline right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joan Miller, Precinct Six.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you so much, and I really appreciate both Mr. Manginero's and Mr. Golubov's descriptions. I, I do think it's important for the town meeting members to take a pause on this project and vote to reconsider. And I, I would ask Mr. Golubov, I don't, it's not really a question, but I don't think we should question the good intent of this legislature. We represent the town residents, and I think it's very important for us to be fiscally sound and to be deliberate in our assessments of these projects, and it really is our obligation to question. So I really urge everyone to, you know, take that with good intent on everyone's part. I think there was an issue with this project, although it was, you know, there were public meetings, I don't, it just seems that there was not a great business model developed, and we're asking to approve something that's a 95-year lease for which we've only seen 30-year numbers. And I just, I'm concerned, I won't be alive at that point, but I'm really, as a, as a meeting member, just feeling that it is my obligation for us to all understand this better. I know the Select Board was in favor of it, I don't think that was unanimous. FinCom was presented to us and was not unanimous, and I, as a town meeting member, really rely on FinCom to provide sound, you know, financial assessment for me, and that, that raises concerns for me. And I just think the scaretactors on the safe harbor, you know, we're talking March 2022, I think we have time to really analyze this, perhaps it's small tweaks and not a complete overhaul, but I think we should vote to reconsider and take a pause and really understand what we're approving for the town. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. John Serbeer of the Housing Partnership Board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Housing Partnership Board urges a no vote on the motion to reconsider Article Six. Respect the 72% of town meeting members who voted a week ago to authorize completion of the land development agreement for the Waterfield parcel. Over the past several years, the availability of rental housing has declined in Winchester as units gradually have been converted to condominium ownership. There are many people that, for various reasons, would prefer to rent rather than own, so the waterfield development could provide this rental option. A common question that comes up in these discussions is, who will live here? Half of the income-limited units will have a local preference for people already either living or working in Winchester. So the people living here are your neighbors, employees working in local stores and offices, and people who meet, you meet on the streets and on the town common. They may be the technician who maintains your vehicle, staff who work in a local office or retail store, an employee of a local hospital who has cared for you, your parents who wish to downsize, and retirees. If any of these people have school-aged children, they already may be attending Winchester schools and therefore will not represent additional students. An important point to note is that the Fair Housing laws prohibit discrimination based on family status, meaning that it is illegal to consider the number of children in making housing approval decisions, as well as in deciding who to rent or sell a housing unit to. At the same time, the school administration needs to plan for school utilization. Half of the housing units proposed by Civico will be either one-bedroom or studio units. So these 30 units will not have any children. Six of the remaining units will have three bedrooms, so these are likely to have at least one or perhaps two children. 24 of the units will have two bedrooms, so some of these, but not all, could have one child. And estimating school-aged children also is useful to look at the population demographics of who will be living here. Many will be over the age of 55, whose children no longer are living at home. Another group will be younger people, ranging in age from their mid-20s to the mid-30s. If they have children, they likely will be preschool age. The remainder will be in the 35 to 55 age range, and this is the group that most likely will have school-aged children. My personal estimate, and I use two different methods to come up with this, is the number of school-aged children that would be living at the Waterfield project is in the 12 to 20 range, not 40. I will close with a comment on cost, since this issue was raised both last Thursday and this evening. School Superintendent Evans described the nuances and complexities associated with estimating incremental school costs, so my comments are intended to supplement her information. A few years ago, I was asked by Town Meeting to describe the financial cost to the town providing housing that meets the needs of low, moderate, and median-income households. The resulting analysis demonstrated, school costs are not covered by the real estate taxes paid by most single-family homes having school-aged children, even for households having only one school-aged child.
Mr. Serbeer?
Yes?
Kind of moving outside of the question, that's not before Town Meeting, if you'd like to.
Okay, I am almost done.
If the most, if the motion passes, you can come back and present back on the article, but the question is, shall we reconsider Article Six?
Okay, let me just finish my thought.
There, okay. Well, I would prefer that you hold, because you've also extended your time, and we also have a move the vote from Ken Crew at Precinct Six, and a point of order as well from Jeffrey Dean. So I'm going to take the point of order from Jeffrey Dean of Precinct Two.
I make a closing statement?
One sentence, please.
Please support the town's housing objectives that have been carefully developed over time, and vote against the motion to reconsider the approval vote by Town Meeting.
Mr. Dean of Precinct Two, there is a point of order.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I think you may have already addressed it. I was just concerned that we were debating the main motion and not the motion in question before Town Meeting, which was to reconsider, so.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention, but thank you as well. Let's move onward. We have moved the vote from Ken Crew at Precinct Six. Do we have a second? Second from Roseanne Corrick of Precinct Five, lots of them coming in. Currently, Town Meeting members, there are six in line to speak, and I offer you to go to V voter, and what this vote is actually doing is it will stop all discussion on the motion to reconsider Article Six, and we'll go directly into voting on the reconsideration of Article Six if it shall pass. So if you turn your attention to V voter, if you vote yes, we will stop the debate and go directly to vote. If you vote no, we will continue the debate on the recommending, the motion to reconsider. Give you 30 seconds. Give you 30 seconds. I'm actually going to add in 20 more seconds so everyone can refresh your browsers in case you did not do it prior. Two-thirds are required. There are 118 in the affirmative and 51 in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative and the motion is adopted. We will now then return back to your V voter, and we are now voting. One moment, we're going to repeat it to the clerk. There's 118 in the affirmative and 51 in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative and the motion is adopted. We will now return back to your V voter, and we are going to vote to reconsider Article Six. Voting yes, we will go back and debate Article Six. Voting no, we will end. Then the vote that we took previously will stand, and we will return back to our agenda of the evening. All right, there are two-thirds required, and there are 56 in the, in the affirmative and 112 in the negative. There are two-thirds in the negative, and the motion is lost. That will return us back to Article 20. Town meeting members, some of you, I'm being told by our deputy moderator, are using your raise of hand feature on your Zoom versus your V voter. If you would like to, as a town meeting member, get the attention of me as your moderator, you are to use V voter, not the Zoom webinar. Hand raised. Q and A is to be used for technical support. We're just waiting. V voter is scrolling, so we can get the language back up on your screen. So I would like to, while that is going on, Anne Sarah, recognize Anne Sarah of Precinct One.
Hi, um, I hate to extend tonight's schedule, but I think that, given the events on Thursday night, which are new events, they showed us the importance of the, the exacting language of Article Four, which enables us to use electronic voting. And I think that it's, it, I think that it's evident, quite evident, that we need a very careful examination of the language of Article Four so that we understand how electronic results will be displayed to, to the, to the town meeting membership. I also have found other evidentiary problems with the actual language of Article Four. And therefore, I'm rising to reexamine Article Four.
Is there a second? Pamela Court of Precinct Five. There's a handful of people. Pamela Court of Precinct Five. And it is moved and seconded to reconsider Article Four. We will be moving that to the end of this evening, if this evening is our last day, or to the beginning of our next meeting, if we continue onward to the next meeting time. Moving onward. Let's move onward to Article 20. All right, town meeting members, we're going to return back to Article 20, Motion Three as amended. I would like to remind everyone how we left off. I had called the vote on the motion to amend on motion number three, and I found it to be in order. Going forward, we will continue back with Article 20, Motion Number Three as amended. Further on the question. Mr. Steven Boxganski of Precinct Four.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, and thank you for your cooperation. And thanks to all the town meeting members for their patience. As I knew here, I did have a couple of questions that I was hoping to raise regarding last Thursday's vote. And so the first one is, isn't it true that because the initial vote was in the negative, that it didn't really matter if the specific aspects of the free cash were enunciated? In other words, if the vote was in the affirmative, I agree and understand that there would be a problem, that the vote would have to be retaken. But since that vote was in the negative, I believe, and I've spoken to some lawyers and some other friends who have experience with Town Meeting, and they agree that since it was in the negative, there was no need to correct it. So I'd like to stop there, and if I can stop there for an answer to that question, I have one more after that.
Thank you so much for that question. I'm actually going to take it, and I'm going to answer it because it is directed at me. First of all, I did not feel that Town Meeting had all the information to make their vote and that it wasn't stated. I felt the funding source was incredibly important to members of Town Meeting to have noted in that motion. It was read correctly, and the final vote stands. I am the moderator. I get to make that decision, and that is what I stand by. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and I can respect that decision. I know you're in a challenging position there with all the confusion that took place. My second question is, when calculating the votes, shouldn't we have counted the abstain votes as part of the equation to determine a majority? Since the Town Meeting member purposefully selected that option and entered the vote button, if they didn't want to be counted, they could have chosen to select nothing at all, which, which is. And so for that second vote, there were 73 yes, 72 no, and seven abstentions. That is a total of 152 votes. And that means a majority would be 50% plus one. So that means it'd have to be at least 77 votes in the affirmative, or excuse me. Yeah, it would have to be at least 77 votes for that to pass. But there weren't 77 votes, and therefore, I believe this shouldn't have been recorded. Shouldn't this, that, that second question should also have been in the negative because there were not a majority of yes votes. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
One minute, I'm actually going to read Robert's Rules to you.
Thank you.
So if you're wondering what I'm doing, is I'm getting what I'm going to read for you. If we refer to Robert's Rules, Section 44, basis for determining a voting result under majority vote, the basic requirement, it explicitly states that excluding blanks or abstentions are part of that vote. You are to exclude blanks or abstentions in the calculation of the vote. Again, in my, my book, because I have the most current model of, because I'm new, but I have the most current version of it, and it's Section 44, and how voting and how you tabulate it. And it specifically says blanks or abstentions. According to our bylaws, we go by Robert's Rules. So that is why those votes did not count for the abstentions or blanks towards the total. Further on the question, Mr. Paul Mangonero, Precinct Six.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I respect your authority and, and your conclusion to this matter. But I would like to ask you, before you made your decision, did you consult or get advice from the Rules Committee? My understanding is each precinct has a member that represents a Rules Committee, and I would think that would reflect representation in the entire town. So I wonder if there was any consulting down there before you formed your final opinion, which I respect. Thank you.
It is not the Rules Committee's responsibility. It is one that I have to carry the burden of. Moving on, Joan Miller of Precinct Six. I did not call on you. Next in line is Joan Miller of Precinct Six.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Terrific. I, you know, I think I really appreciate the position that you're in. This is a, is a challenging meeting to run in person, let alone in Zoom, and I, I think you're doing a great job. I, I think that, you know, it's, it's just fair to say that the reading of the motion and the amendment, you know, in, in all regards, was somewhat less than ideal, probably both times. And I know you took a point of order after the first vote from the controller, who, you know, actually is not a Town Meeting member, you know, so that's sort of a question. But I just think, you know, if we all look at it and just thinking in practical terms, it just, it didn't go well. So like, to me, it's just a great opportunity as a leader to just call for a do-over. I mean, I just think it's a practical and easy solution. I think people know how they feel on this motion, and that would just be the proper thing to do for this legislature, and I, I hope you consider it. Thank you.
So Town Meeting members, what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to pull line item number three out of the vote so we can return back to the general government. And at that point, we can close the motion that is currently on the table. And those who would like to make a motion at that time, it would be more appropriate versus as we have a motion currently on the table. If you give us a minute, we need to do a couple of things to be able to go back to the general government and pull line item number three out. We currently have a point of order from Pamela Court of Precinct Five.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To Town Meeting through you, or actually a question to you on Robert's Rules, should the expectation be that Town Meeting members read the documentation online that is provided for us, especially new members, on what Robert's Rules are so that we are not wasting time during Town Meeting explaining things that could have been found out if they had done their homework? Number one. And number two, is it appropriate for Town Meeting members to question during Town Meeting how it is moderated? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Court. I think, yes, it is very important that Town Meeting members come to understand how Robert's Rules is, and it does not help the meeting to call into question my choices as the moderator in the meeting. I welcomed all phone calls and communications over the last few days to question what I chose to do. And I took those questions, and I answered them to my best ability. However, right before us, right now, is the general government budget. It is not to go back and to rehash what is done. There are options available to Town Meeting. Many of those who are experienced know what those options are. You just saw someone use it in regards to Article Six and Article Four. However, to do that, I have to close down the general government article and get that off the table so that if you would like to make that option and have Town Meeting decide to reconsider, that is left for them to decide. I will call it in order. However, please let me close the general government motion that is sitting on the table so that Town Meeting members can do what they would like to do and to make that determination, and I can help you lead you there. So if you give us one minute, staff needs to do some magic behind the scenes to get the language to pull the third item for the Town Manager's line item out of the motion so we can now actually debate the general government, and we can close that out. So give me, give us just a few minutes, and my apologies for that. You know, at Town Meeting, just you're not sitting here staring in the dead silence of Zoom. Why don't we, we're going to break, and we'll come back at 8:30, and we will have all the language available for you to read and to know exactly what I'm doing and to understand it. So give us five minutes. We'll come back at 8:30. Stretch and look forward to seeing you back here. All right, town meeting. So this is the motion that is going to be before you. Um, if you look at your Zoom screen, you will see the language up there. It is moved and seconded. That 863,926 under column A is appropriated for account 1210, town manager. Of which 768,476 is for personal services. And 95,450 other expense, of which 5,000 be appropriated for the parking meter fund. And 50,000 from free cash. Seeing that there is no one further on the question, we are going to vote. Please turn to your V voter, refresh your screens. Uh, we just got a last minute request to speak. And since, uh, V voter is not up yet, we are going to take it. Um, actually, we have a point of order. Jackie Welch of Precinct 5.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, I, did, did you hear me previously? Because I, I was speaking.
No, I did not.
I apologize, town meeting. Just very quickly, uh, my point of order is that if you could please, uh, thank you for reading the main motion as amended. But if you could just clarify for town meeting, um, that the, the part three that you identified, that is not included. If you could just substantively, um, inform town meeting what part three is? Since there's been several days since that was before town meeting. So that there's zero confusion by town meeting members. I think that would be helpful. Thank you very much for considering.
Um, so motion three is currently what is in front of you, which is just the town manager's budget. It needs to be voted on and closed if someone would like to thereafter make a motion to reconsider. So we're going to vote right now. And it is currently on your yellow sheet under general government, category number three, town managers. With the amendment that was voted on at the last time, we are going to go and vote on it now at V voter. We have another point of order by John Miller, Precinct 6.
So I, I raised the same point of order I raised the last time when this amendment was considered for the second time on Thursday night. I understand it's, it's fine to read the motion as you have read it. It's fine. But people, to, to understand what people are voting on, some context is needed. I think what the context is here is that this is the motion, this is, these are the numbers. Pro- proposed by FinCom, adjusted to add the sustainability director. Some kind of context. Otherwise, um, uh, just as the two votes that we had on Thursday, this is not clear what we're doing. And I, I'm, I'm on FinCom. I've been buried in these numbers for a year. And it's not clear to me.
I will very clearly state what this is for. This is for the town manager's budget. And in the last meeting, town meeting took on a motion to amend. That added money for, inside this line item that helped fund the sustainability director. The question before you is to include that and to vote the town manager's budget with that amendment. And please turn to your V voter and choose how you would like to vote appropriately. Yes, this motion will pass. No, it will fail. And we will continue with the meeting. There are 90 in the affirmative and 73 in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. The town manager's budget has passed. We are now going to return back to, um, the motion. We'll get the language up for the general government with the town manager's line item removed out of it for consideration thereafter. Point of order, Mr. Roger Milkison, a precinct eight.
Madam Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Question to you. Does the Article 20, category three require a majority vote? Or a two-thirds vote to pass?
It requires a majority vote. Thank you for the question. Further point of order? I'm sorry, they removed themselves, the other point of order. We are just waiting a moment for your screens to show up with the next motion. Go ahead. Yep, go ahead, Mary Ellen. Mary Ellen, the town clerk is.
Can anybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so as your town clerk, I just want to clarify, the yellow sheet, the only times that your motions are going to have a two thirds requirement is when we're spending building stabilization or capital stabilization or any other funds that under the law require two thirds. But the typical general operating budget for any fiscal year and as you go down your yellow sheet, all of those are majority votes. There are some times as you get through your yellow sheet, motions number one and two were two thirds, we voted those the other night. And on the back of the yellow sheet, all the appropriations for capital will be two thirds required. And the funded debt is also two thirds required because we're spending money out of those two special funds. So, I hope that clarifies it and certainly all of this is just a challenge due to the fact that we're not in person. Otherwise, you'd be at the town clerk's counter and you'd be asking well before tonight. So, there you have it. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chris Nixon.
Thank you, madam moderator. I just have an observation and a friendly motion if you would accept it. I believe the yellow sheet we're using is mis-titled and actually says it's FY21. If we look at the top of the sheet dated May 20th of 2020, given that the clerk has a fantastic website for town meeting where we keep all our documents, may I suggest we just change the title of this for the record and just date it whatever is appropriate when that goes up on the website.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nixon. We will take care of that when we get it up on the website. But yes, it is for fiscal year 2022. Thank you for the clerical error. Moving onward is moved and seconded that $4,605,495 under column A is appropriated for general government excluding the town manager account 1210, of which $2,869,230 is for personal services and $1,831,715 is for other expenses. And for such purposes, a total of $30,000 be appropriated from the parking meter fund. Further on the question. Point of order by Mr. Brian Vanelia, precinct four.
Good evening, madam moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I, my apologies, I believe the $1,831,715 is perhaps a mistake because it should be less the 95,450 for the town manager's expenses. That's my belief. I might be mistaken, however. Thank you.
Thank you. We're waiting for the comptroller to correct everything.
Madam moderator, may I ask a question?
I am unsure who is speaking.
Oh, I apologize. It's the comptroller, Stacy Ward.
Yes, thank you.
I just need to understand what we're actually voting here. Are we subtracting out the town manager budget from the total on the yellow sheet to arrive at a new total for all of the other general government aside from the town manager?
Correct. Line items number four through 17.
Okay, I am, I have to send Marielle in the math, so give me a minute, please.
We're doing it now. Yep, it's being done right now. So, town meeting members, while they work on that, I just want to remind you that when they work on it, I will restate it to be accurate and then we will move into discussion and the standard process of the article, but until I reread it correctly, we will not continue with discussion. For all our longtime town meeting members, usually when we are in this situation, we have the comptroller in our room, but right now we're doing it all remotely through everything. So, I appreciate all of your patience and understanding as we work through this. All right, we have had confirmation from our comptroller that what is on your screen is accurate. So, I'm going to reread it in its accurate form. It is moved and seconded that $4,655,495 under column A is appropriated for general government excluding the town manager account 1210, of which $2,919,230 is for personal services and $1,736,265 is for other expenses. And for such purposes, a total of $30,000 will be appropriated from the parking meter fund. Further on the question. Ms. Carol Savage of precinct five.
Thank you, madam moderator. My question is to the town manager. It's really about sort of the municipal budget in general. And the significant increases that we've seen in the municipal budget in the last two years, it's my understanding, and there've been some contract increases and some other adjustments made on the municipal side that have been some fairly large increases on the municipal budget, probably larger than what I assume we were projecting in the override. And my question is looking out the next few years, can we, can we expect to see that's going to level off and be more in line with the projected tax growth of the two and a half percent plus, what is the new development piece, so two and a half to three, 3.8 or 4%, which is sort of in line with our revenues? Can the town manager speak to that? I don't see a report by the town manager on the budget, so I wondered if she could comment on that.
Thank you very much. To Ms. Lisa Wong, our town manager, the question is that due to the increases in the last two years, looking ahead, can we expect level projected tax growth to align with the current rate of increase? As allowed through proposition two and a.
Thank you, madam moderator. Through you to Carol Savage and town meeting members, I'd be delighted to answer that question. The last two fiscal years and fiscal year 22 that you're considering right now do have six town-related collective bargaining agreements. All of those agreements did include a market rate adjustment. So, therefore, you saw some significant increases and you also saw a lot of differences between each of those budgets. The next cycle of three-year collective bargaining agreements, so fiscal year 23, 24, and 25, are, those have not been negotiated yet, but there is not likely to be any significant market rate increases and would be much more in line with tax revenue and other, other expenses. In terms of other variables for the budget, those are things that I can't solely answer. So, I certainly can't speak to the school budget and the potential changes there due to other factors. But we certainly do our best to keep an eye on things like health insurance, energy costs, and so on. So, we do anticipate that at least in regard to the impact of collective bargaining agreements, they will be significantly less than the next three-year cycle and they have been in the last two and the next one.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further questions, 50% majority of the members present is required. Please turn your attention to the voter. Let's refresh it. Make sure we're up and we'll get the question up before you. A vote of yes, you are approving the budget, the line items four through 17 on your yellow sheet. A no will mean that the budget is not approved. On your screen, you should say that it's waiting for the presentation to start, just working for V voter to update itself. So, I just want to thank all of our staff because I pulled article three on the fly. So, they are all working very hard to make this all happen for everyone. So, V voter has updated, as you can see, it should say approve article 20 for fiscal year 2022 budget, motions four through 17 of your yellow sheets. Yes, we'll pass the budget. No, we'll not. We'll give you 30 seconds. Thank you. There's a point of order from Joan Miller, precinct six.
Sorry, can you hear me now? Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I had a request to speak and it seemed to be you just passed over me, madam moderator. You know, it was, it was right at the beginning of the, you know, approved and seconded, moved and seconded part of the motion, I put myself in to speak and I just, I feel like I was passed up. I just wondered if there's a technical problem.
I see your point of order. I did not see your request to speak after I closed it.
It was before, it was before, well before. So, I just think maybe you can go back and look through the records. I'm sure electronically you can see that. Do it, can I still ask a question to the chair of the FinCom?
Ms. Miller, if you are concerned about in the future, can you please use a Q and A? So, then the deputy moderator.
I wasn't really concerned that there's a technical issue. I just wondered why I wasn't allowed to speak.
I did not see you on the list. There's actually, everyone in the room can see the list, including our town council and our town clerk, and it was, you were not visible on it. We can see you right now with your point of order. What was your question?
Well, thank you. I'm sorry, that slowed things down, madam moderator. I had a question for Enzo, the chair of FinCom. Just again, you know, as a town meeting member, this is going through my second term. I really rely on FinCom's recommendations and it just, you know, town meeting members in there, you know, just overrode FinCom's recommendation to not add the sustainability director and that's all in good. But I wanted to know what FinCom's recommendation would be that we should cut out of the remaining items, which we're now voting on, you know, should we take something back from the comptroller? Should we remove something else from governance? I really, you know, I would, I would hope that FinCom could give us some guidance there. Thank you.
FinCom has already given the recommendation to town meeting on these articles that happened at our last meeting. I am going to continue with the vote.
Thanks for letting me speak. I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you. Moving back to town meeting, we are going to your V voter. I'm going to give you an extra 10 seconds here before I close the vote. As a reminder, this is motions four through 17 on your yellow sheet under the general government, not including the town manager's line item. There are 151 in the affirmative and 21 in the negative, the affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Moving on in your yellow sheet under culture and recreation. Yeah, we're going to bring up the culture and recreation motion to your screen. So, on your screens, on your Zoom, you should see the motion for the culture and recreation. It is moved and seconded that $2,174,568 under column A is appropriated for culture and recreation of which $1,683,018 is for personal services, $476,050 is for other expenses and $15,500 is for equipment. Further on the question for the proponent, the chair of FinCom, Mr. Enzo.
Thank you, thank you, madam moderator. Just going to share my screen. Oh, no, I'm not going to share my screen. Are you sharing the motion? Do you mind if I share my screen?
Yes, we will, we will take it off now so you can share your screen.
Thank you.
You should be good to go. Thank you.
Thanks. So as you can see, Culture and Rec consists mostly of library with a couple of smaller budgets for archival center and historical commission. Really not much, we didn't make any changes here. This, we have the past FinCom with no changes from the Town Manager budget. But I wanted to at least display, you know, I think what the key components are of the, of the motion.
Thank you very much. Do we have any recommendations by the Select Board?
Sorry about that. Select Board voted to recommend favorable action.
Thank you. Town meeting members, if you turn your attention to your V voter, you can request to speak if you have any questions. Seeing no one rise, we will turn our attention to the voter and we will vote on the Culture and Recreation components of your Yellow Sheet line items 18 through 20. Majority vote required, 161 in the affirmative and one in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Moving onward to Health and Social Services. We'll be getting the language on your screen for you to review, but I will read it as we wait. It is moved and seconded that $905,132 under Column A is appropriated for Health and Social Services, of which $755,503 is for Personal Services and $149,629 is for Other Expenses. Mr. Enzo Rasionado on behalf of FinCom.
Apologies. Sure. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, smaller, smaller budget here. Board of Health drives most of the increase here resulting for, from. Sorry, I wanted to share my screen. Resulting from continuing impacts on COVID support. And then the Council of Aging increases were driven chiefly by contractual increases and then Veteran Services. Those are the three key components to the Health and Social Budget.
Thank you. Ms. Susan Verdicchio of the Select Board.
Yes, thank you. The Select Board voted to recommend favorable action.
Thank you. Members of town meeting, if you have any questions or comments, please refer to your speaker button on V voter. Seeing no one rise, I'm going to have you turn over to your V voter screen and we are going to take the vote. A vote yes will pass the Health and Social Services budget, which is at line items 21 through 23. A vote no will not. We'll give you 20 seconds. There are 168 in the affirmative and none in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Public Safety. It is moved and seconded that $12,679,178 under Column A is appropriated for Public Safety, of which $11,960,730 is for Personal Services and $605,448 is for Other Expenses and $113,000 is for Equipment. And for such purposes, a total of $77,000 shall be appropriated from the Parking Meter Fund. Mr. Enzo Rasionado on behalf of the proponent, FinCom.
Great, thanks, Madam Moderator. This, this budget also passed with little change from the Town Manager budget that was submitted. On fire, we had, you know, we had, we had increases on both of the two key elements. For fire, we had two large impacts. The largest by far was due to contractual increases. FY '22 will be the third year of our contract, and that includes a step five that was added to the, to the overall step increases plus a 6% COLA. In addition, we also have, we had to increase the overtime budget for additional coverage needed because of a net of six open positions that will need to be filled in FY '22. On the police side, they also had significant increases due to their contractual obligations from their union contract as well. So those are, those are the two key concept or key components of the Public Safety Budget.
Thank you. Further on the question, Ms. Susan Verdicchio on behalf of the Select Board.
Select Board recommends favorable action.
Thank you. You see, town meeting members, there are three currently in line. If you want to hit your request to speak, if you have any questions or comments, that would be wonderful. First up, Ms. Ann Sarah, Precinct 1, I'd like to recognize.
Sorry, that's from a previous vote. Sorry.
Thank you. Next on the question, Ms. Carol Savage of Precinct 5.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to Town Manager, Select Board, and perhaps FinCom. The, so I understand that we've, the contracts we just, I'd like to understand sort of the contracts we just negotiated. Again, these were very large increases. I'd like to confirm from FinCom that I think these were larger increases than what we probably were assuming in the override. And that, it's my understanding that now we may be in the process now of renegotiating contracts again. Can, can, so can we, I guess, maybe FinCom comment on how these past increases compared to what we assumed in the override? What, and then perhaps to Town Manager or Select Board, how are we benchmarking as we move forward in contract negotiations? Of course, we want to pay fair wages and this is an important area for us all, but we also are trying to live within this override. So could, could I hear from those folks on this, please?
Thank you. I'm going to start with the Town Manager, Ms. Lisa Wong, as I believe that she is responsible for the contract negotiations. So to Ms. Lisa Wong, our Town Manager, could you please discuss a little bit about your contract increases and how you're benchmarking those contracts and negotiating them going forward in regards to the override?
Right. Through you, Madam Moderator, to answer that question. So there are several components to contract negotiations. There are a number of parties that ultimately do have to approve the contracts, and there is a relatively new Select Board policy to provide periodic updates on the contracts and their financial impacts in the town, even in non-negotiating years. I can't answer the question regarding its direct relationship to the override for a number of reasons. The, the override that was voted on by the Select Board was actually less than 24 hours before I had to submit my first budget. And the numbers, my understanding of that were crunched, were for $12 million override, and they were then subsequently voted on a $10 million override. So there are definitely variations between many of the, the discussions leading up to the override and then what was passed. It was also passed prior to any of the negotiations for all six contracts. The six contracts, we had a very similar approach. It was looking at comparisons to other communities and looking at benchmarking towards the median with market rate adjustments. And therefore, that's why you see different increases within each of those different contracts. Moving forward, it's, I'll just sort of reiterate, it's not likely that there'll be any major or even minor market adjustments. Those don't necessarily happen in each contract negotiations. And we'll certainly have the benefit of negotiating those contracts prior to the next override vote versus having an override vote and then having those contract negotiations proceed.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Sheamus Brady of Precinct 1.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
I just wanted a clarification. I believe I heard that the COLA was 6%. Was that correct?
To Mr. Enzo Rasionado, can you please confirm that if there is a 6%?
That is my understanding. That's, that was as part of our detailed write-up. That's, that's what was captured. Is that, I'll, I'll ask Town Manager to clarify.
I will allow that, Ms. Lisa Wong.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, I'll just add that the last time Social Security's COLA went up by anything 6% or greater was 1982, the year I was born. Just a thought.
Now that we all know your age, there is no further on the question. We are going to go back to the voter and we are going to take this into consideration. This is for the Public Safety Budget. The line items are 24 through 26 on your yellow sheet. A vote yes will pass the budget, a vote no will not. Please refresh your V voter. And it should be coming onto your screen in a moment. It's there. All right, we're going to give you about 25 seconds. A majority vote required. There are 160 in the affirmative and eight in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is passed. Moving on to the Department of Public Works. I have been requested to give you the full 30 seconds and not keep reducing the time, so we will be using 30 seconds here on Ford. The request came from the Town Clerk. It is moved and seconded that $8,322,473 under Column A is appropriated for Department of Public Works, of which $5,195,420 is for Personal Services and $3,082,553 is for Other Expenses and $44,500 is for Equipment. And for such purposes, a total of $70,000 shall be appropriated for the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund and $13,000 shall be appropriated from the Meter Fund. Further on the question, the proponent, Enzo Rasionado, Chair of FinCom.
Great, thanks, Madam Moderator. The overall DVW budget grew at 3% and the snow and ice budget staying constant at 400,000, where it's been for several years. So this budget was actually revised upward by $5,059,000, all on the expense line by the Finance Committee. We did a lot of research on the $117,000 in expense cuts submitted by the Town Manager, and we thought that such deep cuts would make it very difficult for the DPW teams to run day-to-day operations and with, and constantly having to worry about tripping the budget limits for normal daily tasks and supplies. So we looked back at historical figures and found that, you know, Mr. Jay Gill and his DPW team is very diligent at spending town budgets wisely and have a long history of rudding back budget dollars in past years when they weren't needed. We're confident that we can add these funds back, make sure that the DPW employees have the supplies they need to do an effective job, and that any unneeded funds will be reverted at the end of the year. Thanks.
Thank you. There's a rise to question of privilege from Michelle Pryor, Precinct 4.
Hi, my question of privilege actually was the previous Public Safety Budget. I raised my hand to speak and got the speaker request received message on my V voter. And Madam Moderator, you closed and called the vote without seeing anyone else in queue. So I don't know what's happening technically. I put my name also in the Q and A.
Yep. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. So town meeting members, if that happens to you, you need to close out of V voter and re-log in and reconnect yourself into V voter that you have disconnected. I did not see it. Neither did anyone else. I just confirmed that they didn't either. So Ms. Pryor, please take a moment to log out of V voter and log back in.
So it was, it was the previous question. We've already voted it. I don't have anything about DPW, but thanks for the yeah.
Thank you. Further on the question, Ms. Susan Verdicchio.
Select Board, Select Board voted to recommend favorable action.
Thank you. Mr. John Miller, point of order from Precinct 6.
Just a quick comment. What Michelle Pryor just said is, we can't know, Madam Moderator, if what we're here, what we get if we submit something is that it's received. We can't know until you've closed the vote. So, so there's nothing that would tell us how to act as you suggest we might act.
If your name is not called, I am not skipping over anyone. So if your name is not called, you need to do a Q and A immediately to the Deputy Moderator, and they would notify me. Yep. So I'm going to, I'm going to repeat what V voter just informed me and the staff that is with me. So once I call the vote and they switch over to the vote on V voter, it closes us out. So what it is best is if you would like to speak, you refresh your browser first and make sure that your browser is updated and ready to go. But once I call the vote, if I do it and it's not on the screen, it closes it so that it will not show as it's going on to the V voter process of voting. And the request to speak doesn't work in that section. So town meeting members, take a moment and log out and back in of V voter if you are having concerns. I'll give you a minute. We are currently on discussion of Department of Public Works, and I have not taken anyone to speak on it yet. And so I'm going to give you just a minute. And so I'm going to give you just a minute or two to refresh and then we will come back and I will let you know if anyone requests to speak. All right, town meeting members, we are currently on the Department of Public Works. We have heard the recommendation from the proponent, FinCom, along with the select board members of town meeting. If you have any questions on these line items or comments, please use your speaker function. Seeing no questions on behalf of the town meeting, I believe town meeting is ready for the vote. If you can turn to your V voter screen. A vote yes is for the Department of Public Works, line items 27 and 28 of your yellow sheet. And it would pass the budget for those items and no would not. We'll do 30 seconds. 168 in the affirmative and none in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Moving on to the education, we're going to take a five-minute break so everyone can stretch their legs and and take it, take a break. But we will be back in five minutes. I'm hoping we can get through the education component this evening. Thank you. Well, I'll be very clear. So we'll see you back at 9:35. Town meeting, we are moving on to our education component of our yellow sheet. We will be taking line item 29 and 30 separately. The first motion is moved and seconded that $58,153,993 under column A is appropriated for education, of which $58,153,993 is for other expenses. That should be on your screen. The proponent of the, of the motion, Mr. Enzo Rasionado, Chair of FinCom.
Great. Thanks, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
Okay, so overall, our education budget will grow by 3.8% in FY '22. This was driven by two key factors. The first was a large increase in special education spending due to an increase of out-of-district placements and the associated transportation. Special, special education spending has consistently risen faster than the rest of the education budget. The second big driver was driven in, you know, no surprise by the new headcount, which accounted for 407,000 of the overall increase. So the, the over, the overall budget was slightly less than the 4.06% that school committee requested. That slight cut was the, to remove two of the seven FTEs that were requested. So just to review, just to review, the rose and green represent those seven positions that we're talking about, right? We've got two new senior administration, administrative positions, a dean of students at the high school and a new ops coordinator, a nurse at Parkhurst so that we can start leveraging the classrooms there, another social emotional counselor that was part of the override asked from FY '20, and then the three new elementary school teachers, which FinCom decided to add one of. So that's, that's the net difference. So from an enrollment perspective, historically, we've had increases at Winchester schools going back to year 2000. We've, and we funded consistent increases in the school budget that have been much higher than revenue growth over that period as well, driven by that enrollment growth. But in recent years, that growth has slowed. Between 2018 and 2020, we only added 40 kids total over those two years. We're ignoring the low 2021 enrollment given, given COVID, obviously. But 2022 is still expected to be lower even than compared to pre-COVID levels in 2020 and about the same at level as 2018. So 2022 is expected really to be closer to 2017 even than 2020 levels. So drilling deeper into these numbers, we see three different stories taking place. So over the course of the last seven cycles, going back to 2016, so we're going to start on the bottom with the red line. The middle school has stayed very consistent at a level around 1,100, right? So that, that is, hasn't moved very much year to year. But going to the middle line in green, we see that the high school has grown from 1,200 to the 1,400 level. And most of that, I think, has to do with the new building coming online in 2015. So massive growth in the high school over, over these last several years. But the top line in blue in the elementary schools attendance has been shrinking slightly, but regularly, right? Our high point in elementary school enrollment now is way back in 2016. And our expected enrollment in 2022 is probably going to be no higher than last year and still a full 100 kids less than our high. So between a combination of that historical growth, enrollment growth five years ago and the bump of the override, the schools have come to expect 4%, 5% or even higher increases in their, in their budget. But with the override spending coming to an end in FY '22 and the enrollment settling down or even being lower, adding seven positions is just not sustainable, given all of our other priorities in capital and general government. So as we, we've said, you know, we've consistently funded our schools higher than revenue growth when the enrollment justifies it. But we can't grow at that level when it doesn't. If the school's budget grows at 4% and is adding seven positions when enrollment is down, what do they grow at when enrollment goes back up? So coming back quickly to our operating reserve slide from last Thursday, our reserve gap for FY '24 is, is now, would be $2 million if we added back the three positions that FinCom cut in the original budget. So we've already added back the sustainability director role. So we're now up to eight new headcount for FY '22 townwide, if, if everything else stands. And note that this doesn't include, doesn't include the $50 fee that select board voted in last week. We'll still need to understand how much additional revenue that will generate. So there might be a slight help there, but we still have a very, very significant hole to fill. So for this reason, we're recommending that the education budget grow by 3.8% in this year of lower enrollment. This still allows them to expand staff by five headcount, including two senior administrative positions, the nurse, the social emotional coach, and one elementary school teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the school committee chair, Karen Mariama Bolanese.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. I'm going to ask if you could please elevate the superintendent, Dr. Evans, to just speak briefly on our whole budget number.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Dr. Evans. On behalf of the school committee.
It's a pleasure to speak to town meeting members tonight on behalf of the school department budget request. And I'd like to begin by first thanking all of the other town departments, particularly the Health Department and DPW and Public Safety for their support in this, during this pandemic. As you might imagine, our, the impact on the school department of the pandemic has had a negative impact on enrollment this year. But it's important to note that in FY '22, we do expect a very strong bounce back enrollment for some of those students who left us to go to homeschool or private schools when we weren't able to fully reopen. At the beginning of the year, we're already seeing very, very strong preregistration. And in fact, the number of students preregistered or already enrolled in our schools exceeds the numbers that the chair of the Finance Committee has shared for you as the enrollment projections for next year at some grade levels and in some instances. Just to hit some highlights of our budget, I think that are important. I know that the school committee chair and the finance committee chair have both presented aspects of our FY '22 ask. Couple of things I think that are really important to note. Our overall requested increase as voted by the school committee was 4.06%. About 3% of that is for personnel and 1% for expense. About half of the personnel expense is contractual increase. We did, like the town side, have a contract settlement that resulted in a slightly larger than typical market adjustment for our employees, although it was under 9% total over three years. And so we're coming into the third year of that contract in FY '22. One of the impacts of enrollment in our district has been that at Lynch School, we'll need to have 29 sections of classrooms. We only have 26 available classrooms and therefore we need to move the four Parkhurst preschool classrooms, uh, for preschool classrooms currently located at Lynch School to Parkhurst temporarily until Lynch School is rebuilt. That requires moving the personnel, but also hiring a nurse in order to service the preschool students, many of whom have pretty significant medical and, and other needs that require a nurse in attendance. Two of the positions we're asking for were pre-planned as part of the override and deferred until FY '22. until FY22. First position is the dean of students. High schools of 1,400 students need more than three administrators to operate effectively, and this dean of students position is a critical add. It has been discussed at length at many previous town meetings. We're looking forward to adding it in FY22 with town meeting support. The other add is a planned phased addition of a counselor at each elementary school. We're adding a counselor this year and we'll add another, we hope, in FY23 so that there's one counselor at each elementary school. This is pretty typical ratio in elementary schools across the state, and therefore, we think that it is a very important add to support the social emotional well-being of our students. The other new position that we've asked for is an operations support person to assist our director of finance and operations, who manages not only all of the payroll and pays all of our costs, she also manages building projects, transportation, food service grants. And next year is going to be a very heavy lift for the finance and operations director in terms of contract negotiations and building projects, particularly with the launch of Lynch, finalizing any changes at Parkhurst for the preschool to come over, looking at the carriage house, et cetera. So, lots of work to do, way too much for the one position that we have in every other comparable district. This is a, at least two positions, one for operations, one for finance. So, that's an important add. And lastly, the three elementary teachers. The chair of the finance committee is correct. We typically have about 110 sections of elementary classrooms in the district, and really, the need for the number of sections is determined by how the students are placed across town, how many students are enrolled in each of our five elementary schools, and how the numbers play out. And at each school, at each grade level, we generally have three or four sections. Occasionally, there's a need for a fifth section, and it's not so much the total number of students, but where they are, what grade levels they're in, and what the makeup is of that grade level. So, for next year, based on very strong preregistration in K-1, returning registration for students who'd left us temporarily this year during the pandemic, and our anticipated next four months of registration, we will need to run 113 sections. Karen Bolanese is going to speak briefly about the difference between the finance committee's budget and our budget, but before she does that, I just want to reiterate, on the non-personnel side, the primary increases in special education, out-of-district tuition and transportation, we do try very hard to keep as many students in district as is possible when we can meet their needs. Occasionally, we cannot, and they need to go out of district. These are real numbers and real students, known students, and so, there's an increase, as there was not last year, there's an increase in FY22. So, I'll turn it over to Karen Bolanese to hit the highlights of where the differences are between the finance committee and the school committee budget.
Thank you, Karen Mariama Bolanese.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator, and may I ask if I may share my screen?
Give us one moment, we'll give you that. You should be all set, thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you, town meeting members, and thank you to the finance committee for all your hard work and your collaboration with school committee over these many months. Our difference.
Karen?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry, just so you know, you're not sharing anything right now.
Oh, I'm not.
No, so my apologies for interrupting and using your first name.
No worries. Let's see. I thought I hit share and everything disappeared.
It's working now, thank you.
And can you still see that?
Yep, thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much for the clarification. So, and I just also wanted to say thank you to town meeting members and thank you to the finance committee for your hard work and all your collaboration with school committee over these many months. So, our difference with FinCom is driven purely by the number of elementary classroom sections expected in the fall. So, our finance committee prefers a more conservative number and has thus used 111 sections, which are based on historical data. The school committee feels that in this very atypical year, 113 sections more accurately represents fall enrollment, and this is based on the superintendent's latest numbers of registrations and preregistrations. It includes a more realistic expectation that more students will return from private school, more will move in over the summer, and more kindergarten and first grade students will show up. So, these two sections reflect two teachers or the $132,000 variance in our numbers. So, while school committee would prefer to come into town meeting aligned with the finance committee, we unanimously support holding to our originally voted budget number. Current registrations have been very strong, driving 113 sections before returning students and move-ins over the next four months are even included. School committee does recognize, however, the need for the town to stretch the override money out as long as possible. In working closely with the town, we have already been spreading the positions that we funded in the override over, out over the three years, including things such as the dean of students or elementary counselors. So, we will point out, however, that should the FY22 budget be voted at the lower number and should the higher enrollment materialize, this will create a structural deficit in the number of teachers in our budget that we will need to make up for. In other words, our ask of town meeting next year may be larger because these teachers will not already have been included in our base budget. We will also need to make hard choices, which may involve continuing to defer currently approved positions. So, with that respectfully pointed out, we appreciate your town support, the support of town meeting, and we welcome your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Chair of the Select Board, Susan Fardickio.
Select Board voted to recommend favorable action on the education number, and we also discussed the, the need to add back the funding for the two teaching positions, and so, we would support that as well.
Thank you very much. Moving over to your V voter, you can use your request to speak. We have Magda Ferrari from Precinct 7.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment regarding our, our school committee chair's presentation as well as the, the, the budget in general. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate all of FinCom's work and their attention to the override, trying to stretch this town's money carefully, carefully and responsibly. But I'm especially interested in our school committee chair's enrollment projections that we, you know, we haven't seen them the way they were shown tonight in the past. I'm interested because this year has been the most academically and mentally challenging for 5,000 children or roughly 25% of our community. Based on our schoolchildren's mental wellness surveys, we need more than ever to support these kids, their teachers, our administrators, our superintendent. To believe that September will be back to normal for these children is unreasonable and unrealistic, it seems. Let's send a message to all of them that we want to make sure that they are fully supported. The foundation of our town are these students. This is so evident if you follow all the real estate transactions since February of this year. These are new families, new students, on top of all the families like we just heard that are possibly returning from a COVID year from various private schools, who for the most part intend to return. So, let's make sure these students are fully funded, and given what I'm hearing and what we are seeing in the presentations, given the thoughtful remarks by Dr. Evans and our school committee chair, I make the motion to move that Article 20, motion 29, School Department 3100, move $132,528 from free cash to make up the difference from the original school budget that was proposed with the difference that FinCom is proposing for the school budget. Thank you.
Thank you. There, give me one moment, I'm going to put it on the screen to make sure that you can confirm that this is what you are asking for. I'm going to read it out loud again, and I would like you to confirm it. It is moved and seconded that Article 20, motion 29 of the School Department 3100 be amended by adding $132,528 to be funded from free cash, such that the new motion reads as follows. $58,286,521 be appropriated to School Department 3100, $132,528 from free cash. Those who would like to second? Ms. Ferrari, can you confirm that this is what you intended?
I confirm that that is the motion that I am intending, thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Rosari with the second of Precinct 5. On the motion to amend, so for town meeting members that are newer and unfamiliar, what just happened is that a town meeting member requested that we modify the line item 29 of your yellow sheet to include more money. For town meeting members who are new as well, the town meeting members are allowed to ask questions about the school's budget and the line items in there, however, town meeting is not to define how the school department is to use that money. We can only do the base number. So, with that in mind, we are going to hear from the proponent of the article, Mr. Enzo Rasionado, Chair of FinCom, and then we will go to the school committee and go to town meeting members. There is a point of order before I do that by Roseanne Coric of Precinct 5.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm not sure if it should be a point of order or a point of privilege, but the school department line item on my yellow sheet says 3110, and in this motion, it's indicated as School Department 3100 on my screen, and I'm not sure if that is something that should be amended as part of this article.
Thank you very much. That's a Scribner's error, and I will accept that as a change, is that we all are very clear that what was intended was 3110 of education.
Thank you.
Mr. Enzo Rasionado of FinCom, do you have a recommendation on the motion to amend?
Yes, thank, thank, thank you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to share a couple more slides to just talk a little bit more about, about our rationale. So, you know, we've, we've already been through the financial reasons for slowing down spending in general. We've already, already added back the sustainability director role on our last meeting. We covered that the school enrollment is down in FY22 for the numbers that we, that were shared with us. You know, I think that there, there may have been some updates, but we actually received another update as of last week, so I don't think they've changed that much since we've, you know, based on the ones we've seen. And we've, we've further covered that elementary schools in particular have been down consistently since 2016, and the schools are still looking to add seven new headcount. So, remember that the school budgets voted as one number. They have complete discretion as to how they want to spend it. So, for instance, they could choose to add these elementary school teachers and cut one or both of the administrative roles. They could spend that bottom line number however they want, but FinCom does advise that that headcount number, because, goes down because it affects other budgets that are not in the school budget, right? So, every headcount you add, you bring in more benefits in terms of health insurance, OPEB, you know, pension, et cetera, that have to get factored into, into the totals. So, we did look at the elementary school counts in detail, so I wanted to explain that. So, this year in FY21, we currently have 110 sections, and this, this in a COVID year when the total elementary students was very low. In fact, we had 120 less kids across all the elementary schools this year versus last year. The schools in March projected a bounce back to 2070. Those were the numbers we received in March. So, almost fully back to what we, we saw in FY20 pre-COVID when we had 2076, and that was in March, right? Last week, they revised their numbers to slightly show that through April, they already had 2,030 confirmed registrations. So, that's through the end of April, and it's still unclear what the final number is going to be, but, you know, we're at the end of April, almost May, and so, 2070 sounds actually pretty realistic, right? So, in FY20, pre-COVID, they had 110 sections for about the same number of kids. So, it seemed odd that now we're jumping to 113. How, how do we get there, right? So, we dug some more. So, we went, we went to FY19, more kids, still 110 sections, right? So, then we went farther back. FY18, even more kids, but at this point, we had 111 sections, so one more than FY19 and 20, but still, still hard to get, get our heads wrapped around 113. So, we went all the way back to FY15. So, FY16 was actually the highest number of kids we've ever had in the elementary schools, and we've never had more than 111 sections, even in FY16 when we had 2179, almost 100 kids more than we're expecting in FY22, and at no time ever have we had more than 111 sections, and now we're proposing 113. So, that's our rationale, you know? Clearly, this feels like a want and not a need. Obviously, elementary school teachers are very important, so if this doesn't mean that the schools can't have 113 sections, it just means that then they have to prioritize what's most important amongst their FTE adds. If we can't have shrinking enrollment and justify adding seven new headcount. So, just a note, so, no doubt, there's going to be folks that will say that we should be adding more to the school's budget, it's for our kids, but listen closely to those appeals. Do they factor in the financial elements that this acceleration of spending is going to do long-term? Has the school committee considered the budget impacts for all of these adds? We don't fault the, the school committee for trying to add as much money as possible to the budget, to their budget, but, you know, if I was on school committee, I would probably ask for big increases too. I mean, after all, that's their role is to try to get the most resources for their kids, but they don't have visibility into the larger picture of our town budget. That's finance committee's role, right? FinCom doesn't report to select board, they don't report to school committee. We report to you, the town meeting members, and it's our job to give you a sustainable budget. So, yes, school committee can ask for seven new headcount, even in the middle of this pandemic with smaller enrollment numbers than we had two years ago, but that doesn't change the fact that the budget has to tie at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Chair of the school committee, Karen Bolanese.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. So, I guess I would just comment with respect to the historical information given by Mr. Rasionado, that this, the numbers that we have just recent, most recently provided to the finance committee are the number of actual preregistered and registered students. It is not a projection, and this does not include returning students. It doesn't include our move-ins over the summer or our K-1 students. And also, we have four months left until the beginning of the school year, and we see, it has been our trend that we see a number of move-ins that come in over the, over this entire summer. And then also, with respect to the total number of students that Mr. Rasionado refers to, that that has been down, it is not so much the total number of students as where these students go to school. So, for example, at Lynch, we could have four large sections at a grade level on the upper end of our classroom guidelines before we even have summer move-ins, or we could have five smaller sized sections. But the, the fact of the matter is that we have to plan for these teachers and the students upfront. I, I guess, would Dr. Evans like to add anything further to that? I guess would Dr. Evans like to add anything further to that?
Sure. I think one of the most important factors when we're trying to project enrollment is to be sure that we take into account the size of the classrooms, the schools where the students are enrolled, the specialized programs that are in those schools where students are fully included in regular classrooms. And so while we're uncertain what the limitations will be on full in-person return in the fall, whether students will have to wear masks, whether they'll still have to stay three feet apart, how many students we can fit into a classroom, et cetera, I think it would be prudent for us to have smaller class sizes on average to start the year, particularly if we need to keep students three feet apart. If we push some of these sections at Lynch, for example, where, which is where we've added most of the additional sections. If we hadn't had to have five sections, great, K1, 2, 3, 4. Every every grade but fifth grade next year at Lynch will be at five sections. We would have been closer to the typical 110 or 111 sections because of some of the other schools were running 20 or 22 sections. So some of the classrooms in some of our schools are on the small side, can only fit 22 students even at best. And in a pandemic, we want to be sure that we keep sufficient space so that we can accommodate students in their home schools. It was quite disruptive this year. Some of the students who joined us had to go to schools other than their home schools because they couldn't fit in under the DEFC and the CDC guidelines in order to keep social distancing. So particularly with the uncertainty and the pandemic and the likely, strong likelihood that our enrollment is going to be higher than I had projected in March, I think it's prudent to stay at 113. At this point, we will run 113, and if the additional funding is not returned to our budget, as the Chair of the FinCom says, we'll have to make some hard choices in some other areas. It is possible we would have to go to 115 sections if enrollment was very strong at some other schools over the summer, for example. And so as we always do, we strive to find the money somewhere else in our budget, defer spending on something that can be deferred, whether it's technology or textbooks or materials. Sometimes we have favorable personnel movement, and we really try to work within, live within our means. The difference, I think, between some other superintendent's development of budget and my development of budget has always been that I've tried to be as open and transparent as possible in our budget development. Ask only for what we need, not for what we want, which is always more. And we recognize that a 4.06% increase is not not something that represents a want, but it represents a need. And all of these positions are needs and had been carefully planned, some of them for many years. So we appreciate your consideration of restoring our budget to the full 113 elementary sections because they certainly will be needed in the fall. Thank you.
And then as for the motion to amend, just as a final comment, I would just say that the school committee appreciates and accepts the motion to amend.
Thank you very much. And we, town meeting members, we have already heard that the select board recommends favorable action for your consideration as well. Going over to our V voter, town meeting members, you can use a speak button. We actually already have a long list of town meeting members wishing to speak on the motion to amend the education budget, which will be on your screen shortly. First, on the list of requests to speak from town meeting members, Mr. Paul Mangonaro from Precinct 6.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have a question to the to the Madam Moderator to the superintendent. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. My first question is, in the budget, a while back, school committee voted to remove the Sagem logo and name from the high school. And she had promised that if that vote took place, that she would have the funds to remove it. I was wondering the progress, our status reported on that. And then just a general comment, I've coached youth sports in this town for 30 years. And it might be a small gauge, but I'm seeing eighth graders at a record high in my programs, leaving the town to go to private school because they want to be assured that they're going to be in person next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. To Dr. Evans, I believe, if I directed incorrectly, please redirect it the way properly should go. But I believe to Dr. Evans, could you provide information on if there's funding regarding the Sagem logo along with I believe the second question was in regards to us in-person learning, I'm sorry, in-person learning next year, what is the plan is for that? Thank you.
Sure, I'd be I'd be happy to answer those questions. So the first question had to do with our transition to a new logo. The school committee voted to move towards a new logo for the school department, which is now the red and black. And we're transitioning uniforms to a new logo. And so we've been doing that from actually the FY21 budget, and there'll be some additional provision for that in the FY22 budget. We've also made some small headway in transitioning away from the previous logo where it appears on signage or in the gymnasium on some of the mats and wall coverings, et cetera. The largest change that will be required is the is the logo on the gym floor. The gym floor needs replaced in some, within the next few years, that will have to be provisioned for. But all of the things that we had promised that we would change over time, including uniforms and signage and so forth, the signs at the fields, for example, have either already been taken care of or in the planning stages. And I'm confident that that will be handled expeditiously. The second question is about private school enrollment. Mr. Mangonaro is absolutely correct that we lost some students this year to private schools because they were able to, due to their size or configuration, allow full in-person learning. We are expecting to have most of those students return to us. We're in the process of contacting those families when they haven't contacted us. Many of them have already re-enrolled. We had very strong dozens of students re-enroll over the course of March and April when we announced that we were returning to full in-person learning this year. Full in-person learning has been highly successful, and we fully anticipate that we will be fully in person in the fall. And that bounce back enrollment will result in students who had left us returning and more students moving in into town, as we've seen in our pre-registration process. Thank you.
Thank you. Going forward on the question, Michelle Pryor of Precinct 4. Prior to do that, I just, we're going to quickly do the Scribner's error as well for the 3100 on the final and repost it to your screen. But that is a Scribner's error.
I like the use of the word Pryor there, Madam Moderator. Nicely done. So the first thing I'd like to do is wish Dr. Evans well as she wraps up this school year and heads into retirement. I hope that WPS daily health updates don't haunt her in her dreams after you leave the role. So thank you for that. Unsurprisingly, for those who've known me and my years on town meeting and FinCom, I am not in favor of this amendment. Got some facts to back that up as well. For the person who put forth the motion on behalf of town meeting, we do not have 5,000 children in our school system. Even counting our pre-K, we don't. We have about 4,500 to 4,600 students. Enrollment is trending downward. After the 2019 override, the school system laid off some elementary teachers due to declining enrollment. A few other facts. Yes, the pandemic had significant impacts on people holding kids out of kindergarten, perhaps, spending an extra year at home, or spending a year at a different school. But we started this school year with 182 fewer students than last school year. And I don't doubt that there's been robust return with in-person learning. I think that's great. I appreciate Mr. Racionato's chart that shows 110 sections of K through 5 and how that serviced 2,070 students in the year before the pandemic. We have 2,040 registrations now. And I suppose it is possible that over the summer, families come back from private school, or houses turn over and families move in. But we need more than 30 children aged 6 to 12 to get to that number. And that would suffice potentially with 110 sections. If we have overcrowding at Lynch, which we very well may, our school district has school choice. They have options available. They can offer open slots in other schools if parents wish to send their children to a school with more space. It may not be in walking distance, but it's an option for smaller class sizes. There are creative ways to solve overcrowding. Now I'll pivot to where I want town meeting to think about what the finance committee has brought forth where less. Every dollar we spend in free cash with an amendment, with other articles, digs a larger fiscal hole. We've heard that contracts are going to be renegotiated next year. So the choices we make this year regarding headcount will have implications on the contracts and the number of positions that those personnel increases are spread across. And it's not 132,528 dollars. The three-year cost of those positions are far higher, not including pension and retiree health insurance, should they age out and finish their career with us in Winchester. I appreciate 4.06% growth versus 3.89% growth. It's all over to proposition two and a half growth. And I guess I'll sum up my oppositions to this motion to amend and last week's amendment to general government. I'd like to quote Springfield native Dr. Seuss. "If the Lorax speaks for the trees, then I'm the former FinCom chair who speaks for maintaining our reserves and minimizing growth in our operating budget. Please join me in voting no on this motion to amend." Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Jack Lemenezay from Precinct 6.
Okay.
Yes, you are.
Okay. Quick question for Mr. Racionato. Can you help us understand what measures FinCom uses to compare Winchester's per pupil spending to comparable towns?
Thank you. Mr. Racionato, could you please provide more information about the per pupil spending that the FinCom is using, or any research that FinCom has done to give, provide analysis on that?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Would you mind if I share my screen?
Yes, you will. We'll stop sharing ours.
Can you see that?
Thank you. Yep, we can see it.
Let's start. Let's start going back. I mean, I think we we looked at, we've looked at per pupil spending in a decent amount of detail, right? Now, if you go back to our FY20 override slide, right? This is the, I saw this, first saw this slide back in my first Springtown meeting, two or three years ago. But, you know, and it was the primary reason I voted for the override. But later, I came back to it and realized there's a lot more to this story, right? You know, it showed that Winchester would only move up a couple of spots within within the average single-family home tax bill with the override. But the, you know, as of FY21, Winchester's actually number eight in average single-family tax bill, right? So the towns in front of us on the chart are all top six in Massachusetts out of 300 towns. And so moving up a couple of spots from 11 to 8 is a big difference versus number 30 to number 28. So we've already, we're well, we're well into the top 10. And with our next override, we could be pushing the next, the top five. So clearly, we're already at the top end of the range for taxes. And we're spending everything we can on our budget in schools. Over 70% of our budget goes to the education budget. So when you look at our peers and per pupil spending, Winchester seems way behind. But we're actually at the high end of our real estate taxes, and we're spending the vast majority of our money on education. So how can we be the lowest in our peer group in pure, in per pupil spending? Do you ever wonder how that's possible? So, you know, I I think, let's take a step back and see if we can figure that out, right? So if if this was our per pupil chart versus our comparison towns, we'd be right in the mix with really amazing school districts like Acton and Hopkinton, Belmont, right? We spend a little bit more, but not tremendously so than Acton or Hopkinton. And Belmont a little bit less, but not tremendously so. We'd be right where we need to be, and we'd be focused on spending those resources. But that's not the focus, right? We're focused on seeing these other nine towns and that have significantly more spending and figuring out how we can get to those levels. But the question is, should that really be the goal? What would it take to get there? And it turns out, there's a couple of reasons why that would be very difficult. The first one is, we have way more number of students. Winchester actually has, you know, the perfect mix of great schools, proximity to Boston, transit, beautiful downtown. And we're a big draw for families, but that means we have a way higher ratio of students to residents than other towns. So note that many of our comparison towns are in the 15% range, and we're in the 20% range. The ones with the asterisks are the nine I referred to earlier. More students means less dollars per student. So if we were in the 15% range, we'd be at 1,000 less students, and that would change our per pupil spending considerably. So this isn't, it's not a negative, it's just a fact, right? So if we're if we're looking to compare ourselves against these other towns, you have to take this into account. The second key factor, it's even more important, is is commercial revenue, right? I mentioned on Thursday, we get 96% of our tax levy from residents versus commercial. So that's the highest of any of our comparison towns. So you might be saying, doesn't seem like a big difference. We just got down to, you know, like 90, they're all in the 90s, right? But if we just got down to Concord, 91% coming from residential, that'd be $6 million annually, I assure you. I wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't have to arm wrestle for two elementary school teachers if that were the case. And, you know, and notice on the asterisk on the right side, that towns we're trying to compete with have an obscene amount of commercial revenue to tap into to fund their schools. So if we were at 75%, that would be $30 million more annually that we'd have to to spend on our schools. So what would it take to compete with these towns? Well, unless we get a significant amount of undetermined or undefined commercial revenue source, it's got to come from the residents, right? So, you know, here's, here's the math there. If you take the average, not the high, just the average of the per pupil spending for those big nine, that's here on the left, right? That's 19,751 per pupil. And if you take the difference between what we spend and that, it's $5,700 per pupil. That was, we're not spending that they are. So if you multiply that times our current enrollment, you get $25 million annually, 96% of which has to come from residential taxes, which is, you know, 24.7 million divided by all of the different households, you're at $3,600 per household, give or take, each year to fund what I think the school committee wants us to fund. Right? So you know, I I think, where does that land us? That lands us at number two in the state. So if we actually went through and did that and had an override for 25 million, we'd be number two. And I suggest that these towns that we're comparing ourselves to is the wrong, are the wrong towns. If this is where we're trying to go, then, you know, sure, this aggressive ad of school resources makes sense. But we need to make that clear to our residents and to finance committee because we're not trying to get here, right? If we're going to try to buy this Ferrari, let's do it without covering the price sticker, right? Go on this path. Going on this path makes Winchester unaffordable for many of our residents, especially families with no children, seniors. We want to continue to make Winchester a great place for families to raise their children, but we don't want to be it to be only for families with children. So that starts with controlling the budget, and, you know, that's why I think adding these seven FTEs is just too much. You know, if we, you know, most other towns are being more fiscally responsible, and we shouldn't be trying to double down in the middle of a pandemic.
Thank you. Further on the question, Karen Connolly of Precinct 3.
I apologize, Madam Moderator. I had not unmuted. Thank you for giving me that reminder. I rise to speak for the first time as a town meeting member. Although in my nearly 30 years in Winchester, I have certainly followed town budgets and school committee budgets very closely. I have also followed the entire town budget very closely and have sat through many town meetings when I have heard predicted that we would soon have nothing left in free cash. And I have seen the town continue to use its resources very wisely. Schools, school departments have to run a little differently than everybody else. They deal with some basic realities that don't change. Anytime a child shows up in Winchester and wants to go to public school, public school has to make a space for that child. If that child shows up with severe special needs that eventually requires that child to be educated out of district, Winchester is responsible by federal law. Winchester is responsible by federal law for educating that child. It appears to me that the numbers that the superintendent has has run are very real. And I think we will need those extra teachers. If this proposed amendment does not pass, as many people have noted, there will have to be some hard choices made. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of places to play with numbers in a school budget. Most of the money in a school budget goes for personnel. The seven positions we keep hearing discussed tonight, several of them have been up to be funded for many years, not the least of which is the dean of students, which I was on a committee that first suggested more than a decade ago. My daughter is now a graduated nurse midwife with a full-time job. And she wasn't even in the school district when we first said we needed a dean of students. I think we will need those extra elementary teachers. So where will the money come from? Perhaps it will come from the dean of students. Perhaps more likely it will come from the fact that the stool department will look at the one other place where it has some money is a technology budget. And it will choose to cut the technology budget. And going forward, the technology budget will again be underfunded. Where that last left us was five, six years ago, when we were severely underfunded with educational technology. The community had to raise eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in private money to bring educational technology to our school system. If that had not happened, imagine how unpleasant the pandemic would have been. How much more unpleasant than it has been. So I hope that as we consider whether or not to support this amendment, we realize that the school department does present to us a reasonable and rational budget. School folks know how to keep their budgets in line and they work to do that every year. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Further on the question, Anthony Conti of precinct two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm very disappointed in the school committee's effort to override the finance committee's deliberations on this subject. It seems to me that, you know, we a lot of students left this this our school system this year because they weren't satisfied with what was being offered. Whereas the private schools that they were transferring their kids to were able to operate full-time as opposed to what happened to our schools. Yet I I don't believe that the school committee cut any positions because of the dramatic reduction in the number of students in the in our enrollment. And, you know, it's it's not clear to me how we can continue to spend money that we don't have. And I'd like to also remind the school committee that they have a number of major projects coming up that will rely upon substantial bonding that is dependent upon or the cost of which is dependent upon maintaining our triple-A bond status, which is in serious jeopardy if all of these positions are funded. I don't see how we can be adding these additional positions in view of the threat to the triple-A bond status, which is going to is the only thing that would make those construction projects, school construction projects possible. If we have to lose our triple-A status to because of all these additional provisions, we're going to be in serious trouble. So I would I would ask the school committee to think twice about what they're doing and withdraw this proposal and ask. I would ask our members to vote no on this proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Roger Mickelson of precinct eight.
Hi, Madam Moderator. Thank you. Through you, Madam Moderator, to Dr. Evans or the school committee. Two years ago, we passed an override in the town. And the vast majority of money did go toward the schools to the education to add a large number of FTEs over the last two years. So my question is, at that time, enrollment was much higher. And enrollment has dropped both from the pandemic and from, you know, other things going on in town. How can you leverage the operating funds, the override funds that we all approved? The additional FD and the additional amount of the budget, which has not changed, it's only gone up over the last two years. Thank you.
To Dr. Evans, could you provide more information about how you could leverage the funds from the operating override?
There seems to be a perception that our enrollment has seen a dramatic decrease. In fact, we saw a slight decrease this year due to the pandemic. But overall, our enrollment has stayed steady. And with the typical trend of one to two percent increase in enrollment year to year that we've seen for the last decade, I anticipate with the with the bounce back and with the building projects, we'll continue to see enrollment-related increases. I think it's important to note that we had a large number of long-deferred positions that were added and some program improvements that were added, like the expansion of word language. I think that it's important to note that we're not looking to spend at the same level of Lexington or Western or Wayland. We're looking to provide an efficient and effective use of the funds that are given to us to support an excellent administrative educational institution in our seven schools. And I think we achieved that. As as you know, there's high demand for families to move to Winchester because our students receive an excellent educational experience. That being said, we're still in the bottom quarter of per pupil expenditure across the state. Our aspiration is not to move higher on that list just for the sake of spending. But there's certainly things that our students don't have that like students do in other districts. And so the, for instance, counselors at each school, each elementary school to work with students who have social emotional learning needs, to work with all students and teachers. Like high schools of fourteen hundred students have a dean of students or more administrators. And so the presentation from the finance committee related to per pupil expenditure, I think leaves out the fact that even with the override, we're still in the bottom quarter of spending per pupil of all the districts across the state, not just the ones we aspire to be like. And so we look at each position carefully. In fact, you know, in a in a with an employee base of over six hundred and twenty FTEs in a large district, it's important to note that we we actually have reduced some other positions that we didn't talk about. Our net increase in FTE is only slightly above three. We have reduced some other positions. In addition, we have returned some more funding to free cash that we didn't talk about tonight. One of these positions is almost offset by the tuition that is paid from an out-of-district student into one of our specialized programs that goes right to free cash. So we do try to use every dollar that comes to us, including grant funding, including gifts from our community, especially WISI and other organizations that we rely on heavily to provide the very best education possible for our students at the most efficient price. And so at this point, I think what we're talking about is not our overall school budget, but the two positions that we will certainly need in the fall, based on the students who've already pre-registered and the ones who are sitting in seats in our school. And so I'm proud of how great our results are and how low our costs are. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Roger Wilson of precinct one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Am I?
I can hear you. Yes, thank you, Roger Wilson.
Okay. So the 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 school committee represents the whole town and the whole town's interest in education. And I certainly share that interest, although I no longer have children in the schools. I I do, however, recommend that we vote against this motion. But I have questions for the school committee and and that that could could change that opinion. One, on the question of additional revenue. I know that other towns charge for student parking. Lexington, for instance, charges the equivalent to the to the bus fee for parking. And there are a lot of student parking spaces. And I wonder whether we have considered charging for parking. Another question through you to the school committee is on the question of productivity from the COVID experience. Are there opportunities, perhaps at the higher grades, to reduce the number of teachers required to educate the given number of students that we have? The the third question to the school committee is about enrollment. I was on a demographic advisory committee to a previous superintendent. But I haven't looked at the numbers closely until recently, until the FinCom report. And I see that the K to five peaked two thousand fifteen sixteen. The six to eight, grade six to eight peaked sixteen seventeen. And my question is, does this mean, as it has in the past, that the total population is going to trend downwards? When we start to see the incoming students going down and the six to eight going down, aren't we going to see the total numbers go down after that? Though the the cohorts move through from grade to grade? And and finally, on the finance committee's examination of these different towns, if we look at the median household income of some of the higher towns, it's in many cases significantly higher than Winchester. And they they simply have more disposable income. And so I I certainly identify with the FinCom concerns that the business model of Winchester requires a a different approach than some of these other towns are taking. Thank you.
Thank you. To Dr. Evans, I'm going to give you three questions. I'll ask each one individually that was asked of you. The first one, has the school looked at the revenue of parking?
Sure. This question comes up regularly. We have actually a very small number of parking spaces, only a couple of hundred spaces available for students at the high school. And so they are fiercely contested. And as you might imagine, many students park on the streets in adjacent neighborhoods. Two impacts of parking fees. One is that the campus, it doesn't, it can't be used to offset the school department budget. It would have to go directly to the town. And yet the school department would incur the cost of hiring someone or reassigning personnel to police the parking lots to make sure that students are parking only who have paid their fees. In my experience as a high school principal and in other districts, when we have had a permit system, it's it's very expensive to monitor. And it is results in students parking in neighborhoods where you don't want them. And so it doesn't bring in much revenue. The towns that have tried to do this have not brought in much revenue and have to spend a greater cost to police it than it has been to bring in the revenue because of the small number of spaces that we have. The second question was around productivity. Have we learned any lessons around COVID and how we can be more efficient and effective? We were able to run a school district with a essentially a sixth elementary school that was a full remote school using the same staff. It took an extraordinary effort, a lot of cooperation with our union groups. I think we did an outstanding job with it. Despite having a slight dip in enrollment, especially at the elementary level, we had to run more sections because of the nature of the full remote classrooms. We've learned some lessons around technology. I think that will be beneficial. I'm not sure that will result in cost mitigation as a result of some of the lessons that we learned, but we hope that it improves the experience for students and allows us to use technology in new and different ways. Third question was around enrollment trends. What are we expecting to see? And what I can tell you is that working closely with the planning department, the engineering department, looking at the permits that have been pulled for large-scale building in town and housing developments in town, looking at our master plan and looking at the enrollment study done by UMass Donahue Institute. We can see that as long as building continues in town and as long as there are available units. And as long as our school district continues to be excellent, we'll continue to see an enrollment increase. I would expect a couple of years from now, when some of these big projects are finished, that you'll see a very substantial enrollment increase. So those were the three questions I had, Madam Moderator. Was there was there a fourth?
Nope, those were the three questions I had as well. Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Chris Nixon of precinct one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. You hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing me. I had a couple of comments I wanted to make in response to Mr. Racionato's presentation. But before I do, I I wanted to just take a moment to recognize Roger Wilson's questions. I think they're all they are outstanding and they are all the questions that I think many of us are asking right now. I I think Dr. Evans nailed it in her response. I just wanted to add a couple of things to it. On the subject of productivity, the school committee has two outstanding representatives from Winchester High School, Evan Edler and Caroline Andrews. They join us at each school committee meeting. And we've been eager to learn from them directly from the student perspective, what has worked well and what hasn't. We want to know so that we can begin to have some conversations with our teachers and administration about some things that we can do differently, meaning better in the future. And Mr. Wilson will be pleased to know that our student leaders at the high school have been actually talking about this for some time and they're excited to come back and share that with us. I don't think that the timing of this is going to drive sort of operational change for FY twenty-two, meaning literally for the fall, because obviously we're still in the midst of COVID and CDC just announced kids as young as twelve can get a vaccine today. But what about the younger ones? But I'm hopeful that we will learn some really valuable lessons. And there might be some change for the better, perhaps for the following school year. And if Mr. Wilson and other town meeting members are not already aware, I think there are a number of petitions already circulating on Beacon Hill that seeks to allow public bodies to conduct business differently, presumably more efficiently, given what we've learned so far this year in the pandemic. And I also just heard recently of a couple of districts that have already announced their intention to do away with snow days next year and instead to have remote days. So there's no question that districts are really taking Mr. Wilson's question seriously as they should. And I know that we are as well. Madam Moderator, to my to my my broader point, though, I just wanted to say how hard it is to follow Karen Connolly, who spoke, I think, ably and succinctly to what this school committee budget is all about. I wanted to just clarify a couple of things from Mr. Racionato's statement. To the point that what the school committee is looking to do is spend up to an additional three thousand dollars per pupil. Let me be clear, the school committee has made no such request. There is a motion on the floor for an additional one hundred and thirty-two thousand bucks to get us a couple of teachers that the administration and school committee believe we need. There is no school committee desire to spend an additional three thousand dollars per pupil. We welcome the money. There's a lot we can accomplish. But I do think we have a good sense of the town's capacity to pay. And to the point that the school committee is really focused primarily on the schools and does not have the broader understanding of town budget and financials, I would again push back and say, you know, our former chair who just left us, Mr. Vinalia, served on the finance committee for years. He was replaced by Seamus Brady, who just came from the finance committee. I think I'm in my eighth year on the audit advisory committee. And one of the charts that Mr. Racionato shared, which was the tax bill, which is a good chart to look at, has an accompanying chart, which is the tax rate, looks very different. You can find both those charts if you Google decision oh one eight nine oh. It's the website for the last override, which I actually put together. I would say the school committee was intimately involved in those discussions and has a very real appreciation for all the demands on the town budget. I think that the presentation from our chair and from Dr. Evans tonight is a persuasive one. This is a very, very difficult year with COVID. This is a very, very difficult year with COVID. I think the question that just boils down to, as I said to someone last week, is the finance committee understandably has an appetite for certainty. I think I would too, in their shoes. The school committee and our administration has little appetite for risk. I'm convinced that the numbers speak strongly to our need for 113 teachers and I would hope that town meeting would be supportive of the motion. I thank you very much, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Further on the question, Michelle McCarthy.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. I can hear you now. Thank you.
So sorry about that. Thank you. Technical difficulties. My name's Michelle McCarthy. I am from Precinct 7. I've been on town meeting for many years. I am speaking out to urge all town meeting members to please support our students, our school committee, our superintendent, and education. I do not mean to sound unprofessional in any way. It's just it's a late night, as we've had many recently, but I feel like I'm living in the Twilight Zone. I participated last week in what I thought was a very fair vote. I was very confused that it was taken away within a few minutes and that we had to retake the vote. And I just can't understand that we have just voted as a town meeting member, town meeting members, for a climate control employee. I am very green and I think it's a lovely idea, but at this time, when FinCom is telling us we are so financially stressed, I'm quite concerned and I feel that I have to take this opportunity to speak out, as many friends in my precinct have asked me to, you know, that we have just voted for a climate control sustainability director and yet I'm quite shocked that town meeting members are sitting here debating whether or not to add two teachers during a pandemic. I thank FinCom for their presentation earlier. I thought the visuals were great. Ninety-six percent of our money comes from taxes from residents directly. Clearly, we need to be spending more time thinking about how to increase our commercial revenue. So thank you, FinCom. I often really, really respect them and listen to them, but tonight I think we really need to think about what is best for our students. And I ask everybody to please vote in support of this. I cannot tell you how difficult the last year has been for many students and for teachers, and this is too important. Education has always been such an important part of Winchester and we can't let down our students or our teachers right now. So please ask all town meeting members, voted for climate control, please vote for education. It's very important. Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate it. Sorry again about the technical difficulty.
Thank you very much. There's a move the vote from Michael Rossio from Precinct 4. Is there a second? If you move over to your V voter and refresh your screens, we will get the vote up for you. So town meeting, we are going to be moving the vote, taking that up into consideration. It requires a two-thirds vote. If you vote in the affirmative, it stops all discussion on the motion to amend Article 20, subsection, subsection, line item 29 of the education component. If you vote no, we will continue the discussing and debating the motion to amend line item Currently, just so all town meeting members know, because you do like to know this, there are currently four town meeting members in line. All four have not spoken yet. There are 115 in the affirmative, 36 in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative and the motion is adopted. That is correct. 115 to 36. If you can move back, we will move back to the original motion as amended. And we will put that on your screen. Further on the question? We voted to terminate the debate, so now we need to actually vote on the amendment. So I'm going to put that on your screen again, the motion that we are voting. This is to increase the school budget. As you can see on your screen, and the school department numbers align, we have modified that. If you vote in the affirmative, you will be increasing the school budget by 132,000, as noted, I'm summarizing on your screen. And if you vote no, we will be returning back to the baseline of the budget without it amended. There are 73 in the affirmative and 80 in the negative. The affirmative, the negative has it and the motion is lost. Mr. Tony Conti of Precinct 2. I'd like to recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. School committee has pointed out that what a great job they do, and I agree, they do do a great job with the funds available. But, you know, they've also told us that they've had a request for 10 years to have a dean of students and somehow have managed to get along and do a great job without a dean of students at the high school. I also questioned whether we need to have a mental health coordinator. These two positions add up to $189,598. I would move, and I recognize that we can't tell the school committee how to spend the funds that are allocated to it, but I would move that the school committee's budget be reduced by the sum of $189,598. And I believe that they can continue to do a good job without these positions that they have not had for so many years.
Give you one moment. Just to confirm, we will do the, we need to do the same things that we did, but to town meeting members, there is a motion on the table to, there's a motion on the floor to reduce line item 29 by $189,598. Is there a second? There's a second by Pal Manginero of Precinct 6. Give us one moment. Carol Savage, you have a point of order?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Sorry about that. Thank you.
I'm sorry. So I actually had my hand up for a point of order, but then I took it down because we're now on to this motion. Can I, I want to speak on the motion. I have my hand up to speak, so.
Hi. Can you give me one minute? And I will recognize you first, Ms. Savage.
Thank you.
Thank you to all town meetings. As you wait for this, we want to make sure everyone has the language. Between the last meeting and this meeting, some members of town meeting said it is difficult for them to follow along while we read it, so we are putting them also on the screen for those members for accessibility purposes. Mr. Conti, could you take a look real quickly and confirm that what is on the screen is what you intended by reducing the education budget by $189,598? The budget would now be $57,964,395.
That is correct. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. I'm going to officially read it into the record and I moved and seconded to amend the education budget line 3110 by reduction of $189,598, such that the total education budget is now $57,964,395 under column A is appropriated for education, of which $57,964,395 is for other expenses. The second of the motion was Paul Manginero of Precinct 6. Further on the question? Ms. Savage, I am... Ms. Savage, I actually am going to allow FinCom and the school committee and then I will recognize you after them. Mr. Enzo Rasionado, on behalf of FinCom, do you have a recommendation for the meeting?
I apologize. Madam Moderator, can you reiterate how the 189 is, the cut is for the dean and the social emotional counselor? Is that correct?
I believe that is what the individual would like, however, we cannot, as town meeting, define what they use that cut for.
Okay. No, I just wasn't sure how he calculated the number, so that's fine, because I think that number would be a little bit high if that was, I thought he had mentioned what he was targeting. So it doesn't much matter. I think from a finance committee perspective, we discussed all the different roles and, you know, we looked at what we thought could be afforded within the budget and, you know, the FTEs that we cut were the ones that we defined. So I think we're, we would be against this motion.
Further on the question, Chair of the school committee?
I would just comment that both the dean of students and the social emotional counselors were included in the override vote and that we have faced them over the three years as part of our fiscal responsibility to the town. So they were included in the override.
Thank you. Further on the questions, select board, did you have any recommendations? Oh, sorry. You may not have heard me. Select board, did you have any recommendations on the motion to amend?
We were unaware of this potential motion. We don't know anything about it and I would also note it's unclear how the number really was derived, so we have no position.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Ms. Carol Savage.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I'm, I had originally had a point of order in because the, like others in this town meeting, my V voter looked like I was, had my hand raised to speak on the last motion to amend and from the outset of that debate, my hand was up and apparently it was not. So there is a technical something happening with V voter. But that aside, I'm deeply disappointed what town meeting voted on to not amend the budget to add those two teachers and I vehemently oppose this motion to reduce even further the education budget. I would... I, I would like to remind town meeting that the economics of the tax base that were eloquently presented to us by the finance committee applied to the entire town's budget. The sources of our revenue, the composition of our revenue, the state aid we get, that all applies to the entire town budget. And the principles around how we plan for the future and how we plan for the override applied to the entire town budget when we planned that budget. We had some principles that were for both the municipal and the education to uphold the quality of services that this town has. Some operating assumptions were made in that override and, and to my mind, as I look at the numbers and how they've played out, I see what FinCom is doing. Yes, we are ahead of the projections of that override assumption, but it's not because of the school department. There was growth in the municipal side and we just need to call it like we see it. We voted on it. The police, the FinCom says it in their own report, police is up 5.4% this year, fire 14.6. Municipal side as a whole up 5.9. The school budget was 3.0, I guess 3.8. So they are being good fiscal partners in this proposal. And these ideas, these proposals were part of the override that voters voted on. So we are, we are either upholding the override or we're not, but we didn't do it when we voted some of the municipal increases. So now we're going to try to penalize the schools for that. So I don't think we're being internally consistent with ourselves here. So if we need to go back to the voters and explain what we did to, to approve contracts that were more than what we had originally budgeted for, then so be it. But this is, we also need to explain why we're not fulfilling what we said we would fulfill by voting to fully provide a quality education to the students of this town, and that's what this override had promised. So I guess my question, having stated that strongly, I'm strongly opposed to this motion. I would like to hear one more time from the superintendent and/or the school committee, what this reduction would do to the quality of education in the town. And even that, that the, the just of the, the enrollment number that we have today justified the increase that we just voted down. This, as I understand it, is enrollment-based budgeting. So I'd like to hear from the school committee and the superintendent, the impact of this further cut and just the rationale for their current budget request.
Thank you. To, I believe to Dr. Evans, could you provide more information about the impact of this reduction and the rationale?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I share your concern about the sustainability of the funding model that we're using in Winchester to support our school department and our municipal services. And as Ms. Savage pointed out, we have worked really hard to keep our budget increases as minimal as possible. There is, this is not a budget that has any fat in it. The finance committee, the educational subcommittee, the finance committee, the school committee have been working on the budget since November, looking at every position, looking at all costs, looking at projections for enrollment. And a cut, a further cut beyond the two positions that we weren't able to add of nearly $200,000 is a pretty devastating cut. And in, in all likelihood could not be found from the expense side of the budget and would have to result in a cut somewhere else. The bottom line is I have to have as many elementary teachers to staff the classrooms that our students enroll in as are needed. And I will, in all likelihood, need 113 sections, whether they're fully funded or not. So I'm already seeking some other source of funding elsewhere in the budget, some other cut, some other deferral. The two positions that Mr. Conti has suggested in this motion that need to be reduced, the dean of students position, I think it's a critical position, particularly in light of the pandemic, where other town meeting members spoke eloquently of the trauma, the mental health concerns, the disruption to our families. To have another administrator to support those students, I think is going to be critical, as is the social emotional coach. I believe Mr. Conti called it the mental health support person. I think he might be thinking about the position advocated by the police department. So I think there might be some confusion. It appeared on the same slide presented by the finance chair. And so I think that's where the number comes. The actual reduction, if you were to cut the elementary counselor and the dean of students would be 176,429. And as has been said, the reason there is a school committee and the reason town meeting only votes the bottom line is the school committee is charged with looking very closely at all elements of the budget, all sources of revenue, and trying to make sure that we do the very best with the funding that we have. So in my opinion, this has never happened in a previous town meeting where our original budget, as supported by the finance committee, the select board and the school committee, is further reduced by town meeting without lots of consideration and thought. So I would, I would advocate for keeping our budget at the original number supported by the finance committee if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a move the vote from Heather Mango of Precinct 3. Is there a second? There's a second by Colin White of Precinct 2. If you move over to your V voter, moving the vote requires a two-thirds vote. There were currently two members in line to speak. A yes vote will terminate the debate on the motion to amend. A no will keep us in debating the motion to amend. Two-thirds required. There are 115 in the affirmative and 36 in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative and the motion is adopted. We will now go directly into the vote on the motion to amend. Category number 29 of the education component of your yellow sheet. So town meeting, we are now turn to your V voter. We are officially voting to consider the motion to amend the education budget by reducing it by a, one more, we're gonna get the motion back up onto your Zoom so you can see it at the same time. One moment. Here it is. To reduce the education line item 29 on your yellow sheet by $189,598. You can hit yes if you would like to reduce the line item or no if you'd like to keep it as is. There are 25 in the affirmative and 128 in the negative. The negative has it and the motion is lost. Returning back to the education line item number 29. All right. So moving back to the original motion as it was proposed, moved and seconded, that $58,153,993 under column A is appropriated for education, of which $58,153,993 is for other expenses. I believe town meeting is ready for this vote. If you could turn to your V voter, we will get it ready for you. There's a point of order by Mr. John Miller of Precinct 6.
I was trying to speak and I couldn't, I couldn't raise it. The Q and A didn't work. The speaking, the speaking system didn't work either.
I'm sorry, I didn't call on you. What did you mean?
You said that there was no one, you said there was, you were ready for the question. I was trying to speak on the question.
I just want to make everyone clear. When I look and there's no one there and I call it, it shuts it down. So if you are trying to request to speak after I go to move the vote, it's, it's too quick of a second that it will not acknowledge you. It's also the same thing if I went to go move the vote and we were in person and you rose to speak, you would not be recognized then either. So if you can move over to your V voter, what is currently before you is line item 29 of your yellow sheet of the education component for $58,153,993. This is for consideration to fund our education, not including vocational education component. Yes, we'll pass it. No, we'll fail it. The motion is closed. There are 147 in the affirmative, three in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is passed. Moving on to article, line item number 30 to town meeting. I know it is late. I would like to close out categories 30 before we end the meeting. So if you could please turn your attention to your screens, we're going to put up the vocational education motion and go from there. It is moved and seconded that $268,000 under column A is appropriated for vocational education, of which $268,000 is for other expenses. Proponent on the question? Mr. Enzo Rasionado of FinCom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom voted this, did not, did not change this budget from what the town manager submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Chair of the School Committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The vocational education budget is part of the town's budget. So we did not take an action on this budget.
Thank you. A member of the Select Board, Susan Verticchio?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. We voted to recommend favorable action on this.
Thank you. Town meeting members, if you have any questions, please turn to your V voter. Otherwise, we will move the vote. Seeing no town meeting members rise, please return to your V voter and we will vote. Category on education, line item number 30 from your yellow sheets. Voting yes will pass this line item. Voting no will not. Town meeting members, if you look to your V voter screen, given the late hour, I asked to just put the simple majority motion up there. The motion is on your Zoom of what we're voting. It is for line item number 30 on your yellow sheet to fund the vocational education department. Yes is to pass this. No is to not. We'll give you 30 seconds. Thank you. Thank you. With 149 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the affirmative has it and the motion is passed. Thank you, town meeting, so much for making it through that line item for me so we could close out the education line. And also before we adjourn, I just want to give huge thanks to Dr. Evans for her service upon her retirement. It has been a great pleasure having you as part of our community. And with that, I would like to take a motion to adjourn and we will reconvene. And with that, I would like to take a motion to adjourn, and we will reconvene not this Thursday. I would like to make sure it's very clear. We will not be reconvening this Thursday, but we will be returning on the 17th of May at 7:30. Do I have a motion? So moved. Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much for your time, everyone, and your patience, and we will return again on the 17th. Good night.